Thank you. Say, but please. Please.
To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic where this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please.
District one, Mrs. Vernon?
Here.
District two, Mr. Lloyd?
Here.
District three, Mrs. Siff?
Here.
District four, Mr. Mason?
Here.
District five, Mr. Clay?
Here.
District six, Monschala?
Here.
District seven, Mrs. Colmar?
Here.
District eight, Mr. Fox?
Here.
We have a phone.
Good evening, everybody. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Sir.
Motion.
Sir.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Will we approve the consent agenda?
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, say no. Citizens in Congress, we have two signed up. Mr. Willingham? You.
Oh, alright.
Yes. If you will state your name and you have three minutes.
Hello. Good evening. I am Alice Willingham, the Virginia Education Association Representative for this school district, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak. On June fourteenth, twenty twenty one, the Halifax County School Board revised policy G C N to include the updated criteria for teacher evaluations that was approved by the Virginia Board of Education on March eighteenth, twenty twenty one. As recently as last month, the teacher evaluations used in this district did not comply with that school board policy. In the updated criteria, there are eight standards. Your evaluation program only has seven. The school board policy states that evaluations will include cultural competency, but the revised standard six is missing from your evaluation system. Similarly, the ratings of exemplary profession developing needs improvement and unacceptable were replaced by highly effective, effective, approaching effective, and ineffective. The revised terms also have different statements for the indicators associated at each level. Why it matters? The criteria changed four years ago. Teachers can be nonrenewed or dismissed based upon their summative performance reports. Using an evaluation program that violates your own school board policy creates liability for each of you as elected officials who vote to terminate teachers. There are two Virginia codes, one for nonrenewals, twenty-two point one, three oh five, and one for dismissals, twenty ninety seventy. On May twenty ninth, I was informed that the termination notice for teachers is a statement from their principles on their summative evaluations. That practice does not comply with those codes. For nonrenewals, a conference is scheduled between the teacher and superintendent where the teacher must be given at least fifteen days' notice about the time and place of the conference. Then, the details from the conference can be provided to the school board before a vote takes place. Teachers with continuing contract status cannot be nonrenewed. They are legally permitted to have a dismissal hearing before this board. There are timelines included within both laws because teachers can grieve unjust evaluations, file FOIA requests, gather evidence, and/or secure an attorney for their dismissal hearing. Misunderstandings involving observations, goals, licensure, student data have led to teachers being offered continued employment. These discoveries are precisely why the nonrenewal conferences and the dismissal hearings must occur before school board vote. You are the trustees of the school system. The laws must be followed, and when they are not, you are responsible, and always, as always. V A is here to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Camp? If you would, sir, state your name and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jay Camp. Chairman Mason, Dr. Huskin, members of the school board. I just want to come to you tonight just saying that I support the change order with Shaki, our current high school contractor, for the following reasons. Our current project now is under budget, it's on time, there have been no change orders, plus the fact that from the revelation that I had last week that Shaki might be reluctant to submit another R F P. And that's probably reason enough for my thinking the way I do. The other couple of things I wanted to mention was that everybody is, they're over there, their own site, they're ready to roll, so change order. But this is something that was pointed out to me today, and I just wanted to briefly touch on that. Get Griffin Parker back since they have the drawings, since that was kind of a bone of contention that I witnessed last week. This is, now, this is key. Get the coaches, get the A Ds, administration, and everybody. Get them all together, give them one room, because certainly we want to, you know, have some nice from our kids and our athletes. We also want something that the coaches and that we all can agree on. So, that is the other thing that I just wanted to bring to bear. Come to an agreement with the changes and just go ahead and make them with Griffin Parker, make the change and go on. In the meantime, the work can be started, not slowing down the construction process while these decisions are being made. I know that when the high school was being built, we got like a six-month jump on the fact that we could get the trees cut down, the site repaired, before any of this, you know, was gotten together and removed. So, that jump in itself would expedite the process. And then, you know, it will also be an alternative to the time that we take for a big deal process, you know, to do the whole thing again. So, that's all I want to say. And as always, just back to teachers, thank you for the work that you all are doing, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Camp.
Good evening, everyone. It's always good to see so many folks here tonight. Thank you all to those of you that are joining us remotely. Hope you are joining us remotely, you're somewhere where the ocean breeze is blowing, and you are enjoying your summer so far. Congratulations once again to all of our graduates. We, a couple of us were fortunate enough to be part of that beautiful day. May twenty fourth was the last graduation ceremony in our current high school, and it just felt really important that day to be in that building for one last momentous time in that school. You know, our new school is, everybody's so excited about that, but we all just took a moment just to kind of look around and be in that place for one last time. And it was, it was just a special, a special time. And I think those graduates will forever feel that, to be part of history. And that just really was a special day. And shout out to Principal Davis for making that so special, and his team. Because graduation doesn't just happen. Anybody that's ever seen that well-oiled machine, you know that that doesn't just happen. It takes so many people in this community to make that happen. So, it just really wasn't. To do that on the construction site is quite a deal. So, again, the new school is getting all its final touches, and every day it starts to look, it just looks a little bit different. So, several of us had a chance to go in, and then we took one look around, and we said, okay, we're gonna get out of the way. Just stay out of the way, and we'll be back when it's time, we get the green light, when it's time to move in, we'll be back. But speaking of moving, again, shout out to all the high school teachers and the staff, and I'm sure you had some help from some teenagers those last weeks of school. You're trying to wrap up school, and then you had to pack your rooms and pack your boxes. So, again, no small endeavor that we are engaged in right now. We move to a new place. But again, we'll do it, and we'll do it happily. We have, it's a wonderful, it's not a problem at all. It's a wonderful adventure that we're engaged in right now. It's just fantastic. So, again, it's no easy task, but we're just excited. We have a lot of summer programs going on. We have our E G P camp going on, we have a technology camp last week. We have so many of our sports things going on, summer conditioning. There's just, the summer is, we used to say summer is a downtime, but really, we are so much busier in the summer in a lot of ways. We're just as busy as we are during the school year. So, it's just fantastic. But I do hope that everyone is taking the opportunity to just unplug, even for a little bit, and get rejuvenated, because before you know it, we're gonna be back at it full force again. So, just thank you for everything. I think that's enough, because we have a pretty full agenda tonight.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, response?
Uh, this question is directed to the superintendent. Are we gonna give a response to H E A about the accusation that was made tonight about some of the things that we haven't done in proper administration of evaluations for teachers?
I mean, we're gonna look into that, because some of the things that she's brought to my attention, I was not even aware that there is a disconnect between an old system and a new system. So, she has brought some of those things to my attention, and I'll be looking into it with Ms. Miller and our director of instruction, and I'll bring some of that back to us. Again, some of it was, I truly was not even aware that there was a disconnect in some of the programming and some of the state mandates. So, I'll get back.
When did the new take, please, take this proposal station?
Well, she said that the board voted on it in twenty twenty one, so apparently that was some time ago. So, again, I'll get with Ms. Miller, and I'll get back with you all about it. So, I don't think there was, has been any malintent here. Sounds like it was during COVID, so I'm not using that absolutely not as an excuse, but I will gather more information, look into it further, and get back with you all, because I don't think we're trying to do anything that is intentional and try to get everything caught up and up to speed and move forward with any changes that are necessary.
Good evening, everybody. You and I will need to talk about our comments.
I know.
And it's not intentional.
Not intentional at all.
But big congratulations, obviously, to the class of twenty twenty five. It was an honor to be there, a graduation, and participate in this ceremony again. I don't know, I kept looking at the students. I don't know if it was relief or joy or some combination there. But it was, it was a special, special day. By share, Clay helped out as well. Several people have stopped me in the community and have thanked me for how well organized and how smooth everything ran. Mr. Davis, I told him, I'm gonna tell him tonight, and that is, that is all you and your team. You guys did an amazing job. I showed up and did, I booked what you told me to do, but not. I'll work on that the next year. And it was, it was a fitting send off of the class, but it was also fitting, I thought, for the, for the high school. It was, it was a great day to bring the ceremony, to be the very last one there. Also, as Dr. Huskin said, on May twenty ninth, the majority of the board took a tour of the new school. So, we didn't slow anything down. We went on the workers' lunch break and had a pretty quick forty-five, fifty-minute tour there. The school looks amazing. It really does. Unless Mr. Ellsworth is gonna give us some bad news tonight. I think it's a tight schedule, but home schedule. The gym was, I was told, ninety-nine point nine-nine percent completely daily with air, and looked, I mean, it looked absolutely amazing. So, I'm looking forward to that being finished and starting a brand new school here later. Again, congratulations to their graduating class, to the teachers and staff. I hope you guys have a great start to the summer. Enjoy the high school break. Mr. Clay? You're good. Student representative has also taken a summer break, is well deserved. Committee reports, finance committee. Madam, June fifth, Ms. Hicksmaschala, any things to report?
So, from a school finance standpoint, we are eighty-five percent extended. We have a month remaining, and some of that is here and payments that are on schedule. We have the meeting scheduled in the month to do the financials. The school is eighty-three percent extended. We are still waiting for the extra three federal funds. They're on hold pending federal release for that, so we have overextended there, but it's then covered with operating funds, and once they're released, that actually matters out. They reviewed the fuel bids, put that up for the year. Propane did increase by twenty-five percent, or twenty-five cents. Diesel increased by forty-five cents. It's still below the state average, and the prices are good for a year. They're working on R F P for a copy or printer services, make sure we get the best prices on those. I C S services and security services, that contract was renewed for another year. Next year, it does go out for the R F P process for accountants requirements. It was a slight increase in the cost for that for an additional supervisor, plus including the athletic events and summer school vacation pay that they were covering internally before. The good news there, though, is that we did receive a S J S grant for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for the next three years. So, our cost for security services in all of the schools has actually decreased. One other thing that we did review is the boost payment. We talked over the last couple of months about how our state funds is based on the estimated number of students in our seats in the fall. And then, there's a true-up in the spring based on the actual number of students that are in the seats. We're hoping for an increase in what is called the caboose payment. Turns out that we actually had forty fewer students, so the state funding is actually being reduced by two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars for this year. But as I said at the beginning, we are eighty-five percent extended, so we're under budget right now. We'll see how the end of the year goes next month, and.
Does it, anything to add, is that, that's okay? Okay? Thank you. Good for you. That's been a new Mr. Long, we got a little bit of setup.
Yes, it was in recognition.
We could have Coach Dane and Coach Carter join us? We have been trying to get you guys for the past several months, but, you know, you've been a little busy. You know, actually, I'm gonna let you lead this one, because this is something that you have really brought to our attention. I think it's a fantastic idea, and I'm just gonna let you take a lead on this.
Okay, so, I'm not really prepared, but I want to say this, in fact. It doesn't go unnoticed, the effort and time that you put on, not just with the students, but on the fields. I was telling Dr. Huskin every time I go by, that he's been taking care of the fields, doing things, one, shows pride in being a common program, in the fields and the head of facilities. And we just felt like that was something that deserved to be recognized, the time and commitment that you showed at Halifax County High School. So, thank you.
There's so much more than just the investment in our children. We know that our facilities need attention, they need, they need all the things, and we spent a lot of time talking about that, but we can only imagine the level of disrepair they would be in, and all the things that they've been through during that construction site with Mount Dirtmore over there, and all the water runoff, and all the, all the things that you all have just gone through. And we just don't, this board and everyone, and everyone in the community doesn't even think, thank you, doesn't even come close, that you all have just been amazing. So, we just, if this, this moment of recognition even was begin to say thank you, we're gonna start there and say that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
There's something to say thank you. Do you have your point of view? Come on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Always a wonderful evening when we can recognize our students. So, if I could have Ms. Sierra Canel, please?
I'm all the way up here. So, I'm gonna have to try to read this, because this is such a big deal. Okay? So, I'm just gonna, just humor me while I, while I read this. This is the Virginia Two Fifty Expressions of Freedom. Yes, it's contest, it's a statewide competition. And Sierra is our region eight winner. So, she is representing all, and that's twelve school divisions in region eight. It was available to students in grades three through twelve. They could submit essays, artwork, or videos, and you?
I do.
All three. And they were to answer the question, what does freedom mean to you? The selected submissions will be part of a July Fourth celebration in the Capitol with a few selected pieces to be added to a time capsule at the George Washington statue in London, England. Student responses were selected based on their ability to offer fresh insight and innovative thinking to clearly address the question, what does freedom mean to you? By acknowledging the past or celebrating America's achievements and possibilities for the future. We are very proud of Sierra. And that she was selected to represent region eight. She got to go to the governors, and did you meet the first lady?
Yes, I did.
Oh, that's exciting. And the Secretary of Education?
Yes.
And the Executive Director of the Virginia Two Fifty, like, committee, right? And the Virginia Department of Education recognized and celebrated your outstanding work at a special ceremony at the State Capitol. So, there's folks in Halifax, a little twisted about this. They're walking around with these V A Two Fifty pens on their lapels, and they're, they're, they're all celebrating you, and I'm going, hold on a minute. Mr. Davis, do you have a V A Two Fifty? I do not. Neither do I. Chairman Mason, do you have?
No way.
Well, other folks in Halifax, other officials in Halifax are walking around with these V A Two Fifty, and I went in a meeting the other day, and I went, wait, wait. I'm, I'm see if we could, do you have a V A Two Fifty?
Yes.
Thank you. Does your mother have one?
I did get one.
Okay, well, I'm gonna see if I can get us some. There needs to be some more V A Two Fifty. However, Sierra, would you step to the podium and read your poem for us?
I would love to.
Thank you.
This poem is called, "Oh, Freedom You Set Us Free." Freedom of freedom, what a wonderful thing, the joy that a small bird fills when it takes me. The way a frown can turn into a smile, the peace that spreads for miles and miles. I often think of freedom as a treasure word, a shining light when all seems blurred. Though darkness may be all around, hope and freedom can still be found. The statue of liberty stands so tall, a beacon of strength that will let us fall. She holds her torch so proud and free, a lasting light for you and me. Freedom is the bird up in the sky, soaring fearless, strong and high. It's like a poem that finds its grace with wings of truth in every place. Freedom of freedom, what a glorious sound, a force that lifts us from the ground. Though fear may try to hold us near, freedom is stronger and wipes the tears. I love the way that freedom rings, a song of joy that gently cleans. It's every soul's most heartfelt plea, freedom, oh freedom, you set us free.
Oh, beautiful. Oh, you make me so proud. Thank you for everything. Can I have just a little certificate?
Great job.
Mr. Jeff?
Yes, sir, response?
Are we gonna put that on the hallway at the school board office?
You need to place that somewhere, yes, sir.
Yes, please, yes. Yes.
Region, all of the region, all of the region.
All the region, okay.
Yes.
They're suggesting that we definitely put it somewhere.
We will type that up and put it in the school board office. That is important. Thank you.
That's, I'm talking about what she did, now. Now, what we gonna do, what she did?
Yeah, no, that's what I thought. Yes. Just like with the art, just like we print the art, that, it should go in there with the art. Yes.
You can be a little bit done than that. That's an outstanding, uh.
It is.
You shouldn't take that bike, that really did do a good job.
Thank you.
Made me sound like, sound like a young lady that spoke, that don't buy you.
Oh, yeah. I know what you're talking about.
I'm looking at it. Yeah, you got our school, you know. That's good.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get an update on the high school construction project, Mr. Ellsworth. How you doing tonight?
I'd be better if I didn't have to follow that.
What, with the Halifax camp?
Yeah. Well, good afternoon. My name is Curtis Ellsworth. I'm standing in for Jerry Oldbrooks to get an update on the high school. As you'll see when we go through our slides, we're getting more excited here today. We're a little, a little closer to the pinch line. I'll start on the outside of the school. If you've been by there, you've seen that some of the exterior concrete slabs have been poured for the plaza, the outdoor dining area, outside of the cafeteria. We do have fiber I T now to the building, which is a huge milestone for us. Grading of the practice soccer field is complete, it is being seeded. The concrete curbs are continuing, the ones that have been damaged or construction are continuing to be replaced. It'll look like new when the school opens. Final paving started today. They actually are out there right now prepping some areas of the parking lot, and then they'll continue with some of the final paving. So, that'll start shaping up. If you go through the school, the classroom range, you'll see expansion joint covers. I mean, just some of the finishes are coming together. The emergency generator has been tested, everything went fine there, so that's good news. And then, inside the building, flooring is being installed. You said you saw the gym, the competition gym. It looks great. I'm gonna show some pictures, everybody, here in a minute. But the flooring in the auxiliary gym is down as well. The bleachers have been installed at the upper level of the competition gym. The stage is going in, in the theater. And then, painting is going on all over the building, so it's starting to come together. And you know, thanks for looking at it, when the market boards and tack boards are starting to go up on the walls, some of the final finishes there. And then, elevators are still underway, which is, we need those elevators in place so that when the furniture shows up, we can get it upstairs to the classrooms and other areas. Next, please. Tax savings today on the owner-direct purchase process has stayed the same. No new P O's have been issued. We think that's pretty much going to be the final amount for the tax savings, will be one point three million dollars. We have some pending procurements that are in process. Furniture that's going out, we have outside the cafeteria, appliances, and then the trophy cases are some of the final things that are in the current plan right now. And we have started to work on the demolition of the existing Halifax County High School. We have got a proposal in to get the final half that survey's done and the basement specs, which will go in the final bid documents for demolition. I understand the school system's working on the surplus sale. I don't know much about that, but I know that's in works. We need that to happen so we know what's left in the building for the demolition contractor to take care of. We also had some permitting work, sorry, that we need to do to get ready for that demolition. You can't just go out and demolish the building, you gotta, you gotta work through erosion, sediment control, and all those things. Our schedule is to hopefully start that demolition, that abatement, and then the demolition this fall, and then have everything wrapped up in the spring. We have to have grass and everything growing. Of course, that doesn't grow in the, so. Of course, that doesn't grow in the, so, in the spring, we'll have grass there, and then we can close out the demolition of the high school. We talked about the, the getting to the end, and we do have a plan, these are some current milestone dates. Like I said, we gotta get the elevators operational, that'll happen in the, you know, by June twentieth. Paving is underway, the final paving, and then we start having equipment, CTE equipment, admin furniture starts being delivered June twenty-third and June thirty. The building will be turned over substantially quicker July tenth. Cafeteria tables will show up, the main classroom furniture shows up in mid-July. All those boxes that the teachers have packed up, I think there was two thousand, some boxes, a little lost. All those boxes will be moved over starting July twenty-first. Teachers return August fourth, so our plan is all the furniture will be in, and the boxes will be there. Soon as they come back, it'll be in the classroom waiting room. And then, of course, they open house August fourteenth, first day of school August eighteenth, so. We do have a plan, we'll keep you updated if any of this changes, but all these folks that are helping out, all these companies are already getting contracted, it's on the schedule. Now we get to see pictures, so this is the slabs have been poured outside in the closet area. Some of that work is continuing, I think they're still working on it today, this evening. This is the auditorium, you can see the flooring at the stage is going in, that's looking nice. Pretty soon we'll have the seating and everything is going to be on the floor. This is the front of the school, if you've been by there, everything's getting tidied up. And in the front, there's actually some landscaping, there's trees that have been planted already. We get ready for the final rest to grow in the front. This is the view of the classroom wings at the, that's probably the back of the school. If you walk in the front doors, this is the decorative lighting that you would see in, in the media center area. First, there'll be ceiling cameras, so. It's coming. Another view of the outdoor dining area. That's as of today. And there's your gym, which looks really nice, but if you go to the next picture, if you, if you get up on second floor where the bleachers are, look down, it's a fantastic, if you look at the price, I think it's past the nine thousand four hundred. This is the auxiliary gym, the flooring down, striking will go in soon. There it is. View of the media center before all the stuff shows up that goes in the media center. And I believe that is the last picture, so if that'll take any questions?
Well, any, any questions, you can say.
Yeah, thank you. Can you tell me what's the difference between the tax continuing contingency that's, that is going to go with that?
Sure, so there's actually three, there's two contingencies. So there's owner-direct purchase savings, that's the amount that we've been able to accumulate through, you all buying materials direct, we say on sales side, and that's what that's ended up to be. So that is like an extra contingency, and then we have an owners contingency that we've always had in the budget, to take care of unforeseen things, I think, show up. And there's also some contingency funding in Shaki's contract, that they're allowed to use for certain things, but we're hoping that there'll be someone left who has to go. So there's really three contingencies.
Okay, so, in this lawsuit, you said, I'm going to say a contingency for a number of, not two contingencies, but at what point do, would those go come after us, and will those contingencies be helping out?
Yeah, so, first contingent, the owner contingency and the tax savings is electric money. Unless we run into supplements under a single, we need to spend it on for the projects, though, that's all coming back to you. Shaki's, what's left in Con, in Shaki's contract, we should all know that exactly now, but it'll come back when we're ready to just close out the contract.
Mr. Bob?
There's a vicious rumor going around, that we're not gonna open on time.
It's got a plan.
I'm serious, thank you, that's why I asked for you now, to make sure, the misinformation that I overheard, that's how we overhear somebody, slow down here.
We just like to hear people on.
All right.
Who else? Good job, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good one, see you next time.
All right.
Thank you. Davis and Mr. Garber, capital improvement plan.
This is Chair Vice Chair, school members, Dr. Huss, good evening. Including in your packet, you have a copy of the working draft of the five-year capital improvement plan. I want to remind you that this, of course, is a working document. As we go forward in days to come, we'll be updating that, you know, each time when we have some six capital improvements to take place. So I'm not gonna read, go through each page by page, it's a lot of information, but we're gonna hit some of the highlights, and then certainly try to answer any questions that you all, you all have. All right, so I'm gonna scroll through this, of course, we know what's the executive summary of a capital improvement plan, is to make sure that we, we have a strategy to make sure that our buildings and all our processes and facility needs are met for our, our staff and students. This part, I want to stress, this is the historical completion, shows from years, started from two thousand twenty to current, all of the things that we have been doing here in the county to make sure that we maintain all of our buildings, all of our vehicles, any type of electrical or technology that we need, we, we, you know, that information has already been completed. So this is broken down for each year. School data, this talks about the enrollment data and the importance of make sure that we capture the numbers for enrollment, because enrollment did take some of our, the funding that we have to do some of the projects for our school system. That's just some enrollment consensus data, facility data. We put this in here, and Mr. Garber and his team do an outstanding job making sure that we maintain some of the buildings that we have. If you look at the age of our buildings, we are running with some very old, old buildings. And so the critical needs, they are just that, some of the buildings, and Mr. Garber can attest to that, that some of those needs are very critical. Some of the things that we're looking at right now, if you look at the critical needs for each building, let's say Clay's Mill, just give an example, fifty-nine years, the last renovation up to date was two thousand one, and a critical need is roofing, building needs, and also, you know, there are some well issues at Clay's Mill's rail, correct, Mr. Garber? Okay, so that's just an example of some of the things that we are doing in each of the buildings, but we are maintaining this, this list to make sure that we're gonna prioritize what, what areas need first top priority. Then if we scroll down, we have all of our buildings as far as the years, and then the critical needs. Financial data, we gleaned on Dr. Bucklo for this, this centers around the current debt service, which is scheduled to end in twenty twenty-seven. And now these are the, the contributions that we are receiving from the county from those debt services. And we know that that's not the end two thousand twenty-seven, so that may be an opportunity for additional funding that we can use for our capital improvement projects. And we know that we have a lot to do, but, but certainly we can only do as funds are available for us. Technology and safety, we all know that safety is, is a top priority for all of our, our, our school buildings. Key focus area, this is something that we broke down with, with some specific timelines. Granted, this is a draft, so we, we can kind of shift and move, but we need to understand that even though we have a timeline, if it's something that's dealing with safety or a top priority, you know, we're gonna adjust this as these, but this is just an opportunity to give a, a brief synopsis of what we have in place and what we're planning. The one main thing that I want to stress is this PM word right here, that you see a lot of areas for renovations. We know we have older buildings, so there's a lot of things that, you know, they break, and when they break, it's hard to find parts. So we're gonna do the very best we can to make sure that we maintain and keep our equipment that we have up to date. Technology, infrastructure, we're gonna lean on Dr. Hawkes and her team for this information, this is ongoing. We'll, we'll have this information plugged in as soon as we get with her team to give, to kind of get the specifics and the priorities dealing with the areas of, of technology. And the same thing, on the same lines with Mr. Lewis and the safety initiatives, you know, we have the weapons detection, we have the digital radios, we have the cameras, but, you know, there is always a cost for upgrades. So we're gonna work with both of those departments to make sure that we have the, the up-to-date and accurate information. Next is fleet vehicle maintenance, and this is several pages of information. But probably four or five pages of all the vehicles that we have in our fleet. This includes buses, vans, cars, maintenance vehicles, technology vehicles. So there are a lot of those, a little specific, and they're, they're, they're old. So what we're doing now, we are, began replacing vehicles. In the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, we replaced three buses, eight vehicles. Two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, the current year, we replaced seven buses and eight vehicles. We do have a transportation auction that's gonna take place Saturday at ten o'clock at the transportation offices. These are the cars, vehicles that you all approved, and the flash surplus, so we're gonna try to take care of that. So we kind of scheduled what we need to do as far as maintaining an up-to-date fleet. As I said, there's a lot of, we have a lot of buses, a lot of vehicles. Plan for vendor maintenance, we've, we've shared this earlier, that we have several RFPs out. We have one out for the coffee machines, Mrs. Shopware a little too. What we, our plan is to have a district-wide contract that will service all of our schools, and hopefully they'll come in at a cost-efficient rate. We're also having RPO for custodial contract services for the high school, which will be a second shift service. We're gonna be meeting on Thursday with the pre-bid meeting for those interested vendors. Our goal is, you know, we have this high school, we want to make sure that it's maintained and is well-kept. That's also included in the, in the grants to receive, we have the outline type of preventive maintenance to make sure that we do, we do on our end. And finally, we're in the works of potentially drafting a RFP for the groundskeeping of the high school as well, so we want to make sure that the entire facility is, is well-kept. And I believe we're, that, that's the, the end of the, the draft of the capital improvement plan. Again, there's no action that's needed tonight, we just want to share this information with you. And as we go forward for months, months ahead, we're gonna be working with the facilities committee. And I think we have two representatives on the school board and committee, and we will do a deeper dive in the capital improvement plan just to make sure that we are good stewards for our money, and make sure that we maintain all of our buildings and, and our equipment.
Thank you for that update. Mr. Troy?
Yeah, I got two, two things, the, the high school, the second shift cleaning crew. I like that idea, I, I think it's gonna relieve our custodians some pressure off of them when the kids are there, I like that idea. The second thing, your camera systems at these schools, I know you got plans to enter update on it, you know, to, um, have you guys thought about, and I'm sure you have, at, at one time getting the whole system together? Like getting one vendor and give us your best option? Because I know that, you know, the transportation needs the camera system that I have, because somebody broke into the backside of the facility. You know, and, and I think there were spots in some of the schools that's not covered with the camera systems that are currently in there. I, I think for the security reasons of, of theft and break-ins and, and kids, we need to take a, a good look, a good dive into this camera system, if, if you don't mind.
Sure. Sure, I'll share it with Dr. Hawkes and, and she, her team, and we can get back with you.
All right, thanks.
No problem.
Um, looking at the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five bullet for the, for the timeline of updates, HVAC upgrade at Louisville Elementary, this on page five. And then the HVAC upgrade at Sania, obviously that has not happened yet.
It's in progress.
Okay, and that's, that's, I was just looking for an update to see if I'll be on that.
Did you finish by the end of the talk, so they, they are headed right now?
Okay, thank you.
Let me see, is there a question?
Yeah, I had a couple things. There's a couple things that appear with the whole campus, the plan, just in general, but I haven't done a deep dive, but like window replacements, heating systems, I noticed, at several schools, is that just small stuff that are not needed anymore? Or is it just not priority enough, and we're gonna fit them in as needed?
We'll, we'll fit those in, but we want to make sure that we, we hit those, those areas that are, that need some renewed attention.
Thanks. Defensive sign, I, I noticed wasn't on here, but that's, that would fit in that category as well.
Yes, in fact, we're, we're working on those now, and, and all the fences will be done by the eighteenth of June.
Okay, thank you. And my last question was the funding, we've, we've always had short funds in our budget for capital improvement, and I see it's gonna be funded with carryover funds, which means we need to make sure we have carryover funds. All right?
Great.
Thanks.
No problem.
Could you have lighten this board a little, including, uh, the, uh, what you gonna be doing in Louisville, and what you gonna be doing in Sania?
We're doing a whole HVAC central heat conditioning. We've already done all the other schools, they do only two left that hadn't been done, so.
And what's that gonna cost?
I've got the exact number somewhere right around there.
A million dollars. One each school or one for both schools?
Uh, each school.
First school? I don't know why I asked this question to you, but I just want somebody to tell me, why are we gonna spend two million dollars on this? When we need to be building two new schools, those buildings, because those are the schools he's talking about, that's over forty-five, fifty years old, go-to school. But we gonna spend a million dollars apiece on HVAC, and get rid of it in three years? And then we gonna put a million dollars of HVAC in, that's only three years old. We can't take that out to the school, so why would we do that? We did the same thing, cluster, not cluster string of schools out there.
One of the reasons, and maybe the main reason, the heat, it has like the heat in the room. We haven't been able to get a power for that in twenty years. We've been robbed and borrowed from one to get another one, and we had to pump them, we can't, can't fire them all. The unit's over sixty years old, we drove them out for a long time.
Proves my point, sixty years old, can't get fired for, for the other, gonna spend a million dollars each, when trying to do it, well, we could get enough schools, one school, one school built. And we take care of both those schools, and possibly a third school, but we have to do that. And why would we spend additional money, to spend additional money at the school out there, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars? Why, why, why would we spend that kind of money when we can put two hundred, two million and two hundred thousand dollars into a new school? Since you're talking about money we gonna try to be getting, we just spent money, and talking about spending another one. That, that doesn't make sound sense to me, especially those buildings are old. Both of them are over, Sania's over, Louisville's over. Louisville's over, Sania doesn't even meet, that's the federal regulations as far as building with handicap. And they ain't just been like that, been like that. We get ready to spend two million dollars on that, but within twenty-seven, this is gonna come out, it's something that we need right now? Or do we, we can't wait till twenty-seven, to see if we gonna get a chance to build some new schools, or what? Or do we, we can't wait to twenty-seven and see if we gonna get a chance to build some new schools or what? Can we wait or can't we wait?
Um, we've, we've gotta keep them open and still there.
So we gonna need them, keep them safe. So this year we gonna add, so it's gonna be kinda hard to give those buildings away when you got two million dollar projects on it. I'm looking at, I'm not on board supervisor, but question I'm gonna have, oh you spend a million dollars on it, then I got the school, I gotta get, sell this school to somebody? I, I know the price gonna start it, but anyway. I know it's supposed to be used for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, it's gonna start it, but anyway, cause it's gonna cost you more, you get AC put in there. You didn't put it in two schools?
Yep, that was the last year we had, we put it in our washroom.
Well, that's true, I think immediate issue would be if there's something went wrong with, with some part in the, in the heat. And we can't get bars for it and we gotta have heat next school year, so.
So you got an L two, heat and air out the same use.
Mr. Morgan, who was it?
I, I'm very grateful, I just wanted to make, um, I'm just thank, thank you, Mr. Morgan, Mr. Davis. And the recent efforts to replace the uh LED lining, LED lighting throughout the schools, um the HVAC system, all of that. I mean, I think it's, uh, there were needed upgrades to the elementary schools, so I do appreciate it. And I also like the fact that we're looking at these um security vegetables in some of the elementary schools as well. I think that's um very much needed, I, I know this was up there for Louisville. But um I know the school technically has its place, area that's, you know, Scottsburg, you know, for security vegetables as well. So I like the, so I hope we've done the recent years and where we seem to be heading, so thank you for that, thank you for the work.
This is.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that there's six schools older than the hill on here, including the middle school. And the middle school is pretty good, it's sixty-three years old, so if we take care of it, I think we can.
When you want, it was briefly redone.
Right.
About ten years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Those schools having their touch.
And I think that's part of what we're trying to do, is to have a capital improvement plan that would follow. And the other two, the two schools in my district, I remember my notes, do not intervene, so I'm glad to see that, those are good.
Everybody else? Alright, thank you, John.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it. Dr. Butler? How are you today?
Well, yeah. Good evening. So. Just a quick summary for you all to go over our salary increase that was approved by our governor. Um and is in our budget that is um for FY twenty-six. It is a three percent increase and just as a quick, um, hopefully easy to understand how, how does this come about? So the SOQ instructional and support positions were the funded positions within the governor's budget. So as we have stated in the past, does not include all staff. However, Healthex founding public schools wants to make sure we recognize all staff. So we find ways in our budget to make sure that everyone will get this three percent increase. So the three percent increase has been added to each employee's current salary of their current this school twenty-five year. So what, what you're making at the end of this school year, we've added three percent. So what that entails is producing the pay tables to reflect a three percent increase next block. So um I've just put a sample of the teacher pay scale up here, uh starting with step zero to step five. In order to put three percent, we have the current year's pay table. Add your three percent and that is now your step one. So the step zero, we also have adjusted for competitive reasons. Um but it's not going to be above the three percent of the step one. So we just go through, through the table. Um currently, our table holds teachers on step one and step two as probationary periods. So that is why you'll see the step two and step three repeating because the three percent on step one gives you a new step two. And then that is your probationary ending, that's step three. Then again, there is another probationary from step three to step four. So you'll see that repeat again. Um but there is, we just wanna make sure you see that we are not going vertically across, or horizontally across the board. We are going diagonally from zero to one, from one to two. So if you're looking at your pay table, you'll find this year's salary is on step twenty. Next year will be your three percent on step twenty-one. So you should be able to compare your contracts with that. Hopefully that's easy enough to understand. But I'm wel- welcome any questions that you may have.
Any question? That was pretty interesting.
I have a question. Yeah, Mr. Paul? Did I hear you say something about tw- twenty-five years, you gotta do something else that's not gonna work out the way you did on the first day?
No, what I was just referring to was there's the probationary periods in step one to step two. You remain at the same salary for those two years. And then in step three, you get a decrease, but you remain at step three and four salary for those two years. So you're kinda, those are your probationary, that's built into the table. We have spread them out this year. In the past, it always said step one dash two and then step three dash four. But we've spread that out so that you can see your salary per step.
So how much do you personally do for twenty years' gig?
Um if I finished the table, you would see that uh I have our pay tables in front of me. It, it's still a three percent increase no matter where you are, um because that is all that has been approved by the governor's budget. But if you go into pay table and you're at step, which, which step is your question?
Twenty.
Twenty? So you're gonna move to twenty-one, sorry, I've gotta find it. We have lots of different tables. So if you're a teacher and you're at step twenty this year, that's fifty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-six dollars. You're gonna move to step twenty-one, which is now fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars.
Of course, yeah, janitors don't equate to what the teachers are making, so are they gonna receive the same three percent or are they gonna get?
Oh sure, so their table has been, been built on three percent increase from one step to the next. So every, every pay table has been done.
Where have the pay tables been done, including janitors, bus drivers? Anybody else like to say?
Yes, there are professionals.
Those Scots that are coming out.
Sorry.
Yeah?
Yes.
I.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure, I know he definitely make more.
And, and we did increase the daily rates as well. So um even daily hourly rates were increased, um just anticipating when the terminal point.
But see, the problem, the problem I have is that the people on the lower end are making less money. And therefore they shouldn't be, you know, people, teachers gonna make three percent, use their teachers' place. The people that are working, like mail carriers, people that are doing dollars and nothing with it, as fun as I used to say. Are making a better amount of money per year. So it's obviously we, we brought them up to what it's standard is, right?
That's correct.
What else, what you get by the hour, right, okay. So that would help them some, but still not gonna, you know. We have, we have some, maybe this is a, but we have some people way to seventeen thousand?
We do, um they are reduced hours per day. So we have no one working eight hours a day that's making seventeen thousand. But you may have someone that's working four hours a day that is making seventeen thousand. Yes, so we do have, um they're not considered part-time, they're considered, well, I'll say full-time.
Right, right.
So it's based on the number of hours, of course.
Do you, do you have that front off anywhere?
Have.
The people that are making a low amount, where they are and who, who it belongs, so I can take a look at the whole thing. So if this guy is, I'm interested in this, where, if the teachers are gonna complain to you, if you're not doing the thing, then we end up trying to give them five percent. But that's, give the governor give us some money.
Yes, everything's contingent on what, what is provided for us, since we don't make a profit.
Didn't, didn't he drop tickets on that last year, he was from that?
Um, no.
He didn't give us the two percent?
He gave a total of five percent.
Okay.
He added two, originally was three and he added two mid-year.
Okay, good, took it up to five.
Yes.
We don't know what's gonna happen with that as of yet.
Um from all that we have seen, this is the final four this year unless something should change.
Three percent?
Three percent. That's all that's been budgeted as well. But to answer your question, I do have the pay table packet that I can have printed out for you. So you, you can see every, every position.
I can't read it yet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Troy?
I just wanted to thank you for doing this presentation. I know I've, I'll believe that more you.
No, ma'am.
You wanted it to in emails, but I just wanted to be able to make sure that the staff understood that it wasn't a step plus a three percent increase. That's, that's not how, that's not how the pay table works, so I really appreciate you explaining that. Hopefully that gave it a paper.
Well, very, but thank you, thank you for that opportunity, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Do you have a first slash letter about a pay, Dr. Vasquez, can you just move?
I'll try this one more time. No one wants to talk about the. So Ms. Miller and I were able to get in touch with um Assistant Superintendent and the State, um Dr. Michelle Wells. And um this Melissa Balasquez, um another Assistant Superintendent. And we um, we, we got some clarity and, and we just, hopefully we can, we can break it down about um school year. And again, just get some clarity on instructional time and bank time. And I think if we could just separate out those terms and, and just stop referring to it as bank days. We can stop, if, if all of us can commit to stop saying we have so many bank days. Because I think that's where all of this confusion started and kinda came from and we're all guilty of it. So I think um we have to go to school, we're supposed to go to school a hundred eighty days. And when you get away from that, then you start creating hours. And what you have to do is keep track of all of the hours that you're in school. But you're not able to count every single hour that the children are in school as instructional time. So just because your body is in school doesn't mean that the state is gonna count all of that time as instruction. Because they don't count much and they don't count, you know, there's certain minutes and they're very tricky and sticky about those hours. And so unless you are on the inside of how you count that spreadsheet, we have to sort of follow those rules instructional. So we are gonna try really hard to stick with our hundred eighty days. And then on the other side of that, we're gonna subtract those nine hundred ninety clock hours. So when we came to you all and had the plan for needing to do something different on the start with the high school. And then we went to ask the state, you know, can we do this? We kinda have a plan for, yes, you, yes, you can, and this is how you can do this. Because we also don't wanna start the school year with those high school kids in a deficit. So we do have a plan for how we can um do all the things basically, so. Okay, yeah, let, let's talk about that. So again, let's get some clarity on an instructional day. An instructional day is a period from the beginning of the first class to the end of the last. That includes time that you're getting to and from, but that excludes things like lunch. Instructional hours are the cumulative hours within that time, within that instructional day, calculated by including passing times and taking out meals. Again, there's a lot of educational jargon, probably more than you wanna know, but we have to calculate all of that to, to really figure out. Like the state tells us, for like at the elementary level, students have to have so many minutes per day of math, so many minutes per day of, of each content area, basically. And so many hours at the secondary level to count for the course to actually count, so. So standard school year, a hundred eighty days or nine hundred ninety clock hours. Has to be five, go back just a second, five and a half instructional hours. And that's where they get in the weeds of so many hours of reading and art, so many hours of math, so many minutes of science, so many minutes, minutes, minutes. Grades K through twelve, and they get very specific about all of that in order for us to meet the standard. And so that's why we have to get away from, you have banked days. We really don't have banked days. We maybe have hours or minutes. So um again, we're all a little bit guilty of saying, oh, we've got, we're never gonna say that, hmm, not gonna say it anymore because I'm not, I don't wanna get it out there anymore. We're, we're just gonna operate clean from this point forward of how we're gonna do this right and do it well, so. Banked time refers to accumulating extra, extra instructional minutes. A little bit more on that daily minimum, just in case you get um unforeseen circumstances. So while you can exceed the daily minimum, gives you a little bit of buffer, that doesn't mean you can, if you, if you have a little bit, that doesn't mean, okay, we can end school early. Or we can, you know, take off days or whatever, that's, you, you just can't do that because you still need to get as close to about one eighty as possible. It's not a, it's not a one or the other, you really need to try to be above, so. And that's how our calendar is built. So, and here's how we do it. Keep track of it, have that extensive spreadsheet, we've kinda shown it to all. It gets weary out if you ever have insomnia, you wanna stay up at night and study, that spreadsheet. And again, every time we're two hours away or an hour away or any of that kind of stuff, we have to subtract all of those things all the time. Try to look at our policies, make sure we're in alignment and, and just stay patient about it all the time. Again, like I've, I've communicated with you all, it seems like when different people change positions at the state, they interpret the policy differently. And the folks we talked to this time, I think we got maybe the best clarity that we had gotten um this time on how we can address this and do the best job we can going forward and how to do this well. Because we were, we said, hey, we're opening this new school, we need to do this, we feel like it's best for our teachers and our community um to do this. And so they gave us a little bit of direction on what we can do, so. So here's our strategy, and I'll let Ms. Miller kinda explain what she's worked with, with the high school team, on how we can still do this and still get um these extra three days of time for the high school.
Thank you, Dr. Vasquez. So we met with them, one thing, in addition to the nine hundred ninety, that they reminded us about is when we're at the high school, we also have to look at the amount of time students spend per course. So high school needs are different than elementary needs and some of the middle school needs except for those middle school classes that are going um for high school credit. And with us um losing some of that time, we found a way that we could um give that instructional time back to make sure that our students are meeting the clock hour requirements inside of their high school credit courses. Which is different than the nine ninety, it's different than one hundred eighty days. And we found um a way to do it that does not impact teacher contracts, um still has teachers coming and going at the same time. And also what it does is it has the high school and middle school start at the same time. Our middle school students already have an instructional day that begins at eight twenty. And so this would have the high school have an instructional day that begins at eight twenty. And each class would be five minutes longer, which over time. and each class would be five minutes longer, which over time would give us the time that we need to make sure that our students have the instructional requirements for high school credit courses.
Gets us to three days?
Yeah. And that was the recommendations and we spoke to them multiple times. I followed up again just today to make sure I had clarity and speaking to Dr. Wallace. And, um, the different options that some people do, change their whole calendar. This is something that would not alter our calendar anymore. It just works within the hours of that high school. Um, they already have students that are there, um, because the buses are there at that time and they already have their staff in place.
So what would you do with questions?
Yes, um, I can put this slide right here.
Yes.
So when I see the fair block, I'm sure that's the lunch periods.
Yes.
Um, which was about five in the past, the one comment that I saw, a complaint that I heard repeatedly over the years from parents of high school students and from the high school students themselves is that they simply don't have enough time to, to go through the lines, um, having to get through the cafeteria line, sit back down to eat. And it's a lot of students that are obviously, if they don't have time to, to really eat, um, I can just create five minutes to the third block if they should allow additional time for the students. I know that's the acronym, I don't have any thoughts.
That's.
Two working plus people in here in one period, I don't know what that number is, but I imagine there is a lot of people to get through a cafeteria line and then to sit down and have time to, to actually have time to eat their meal. Um, and I think that is an important part of the day. So if we're making an adjustment, it'd be nice if we could consider. I, I've heard that for years and years, people, even from my own children, maybe by the time I get through the line and sit down and get five minutes left to eat or something like that. So I don't, I just notice it was five minutes, one minute, not enough there.
We actually had that conversation today and that's one of the things I'm gonna ask them. And it is, it is five minutes. I mean, five, it doesn't sound like a lot, but five minutes in a lunch town is, is five minutes.
How long do we get that? Do we get thirty minutes? Ms. Colmore, do you have a question?
Yes. And this may be more for Mr. Bentley than it is for you. I know that you mentioned transportation should not be affected by this time change. So do you know like, is that gonna be factual? Are we gonna have issues with, you know, kids having to be picked up earlier in the morning or dropped off later in the afternoons? I mean, ten minutes is not a lot, but in a parent's timeframe, ten minutes is a lot. So I just am curious about the impacts that they're leaving by transportation in the mornings and afternoons with, you know, children needing to be picked up earlier and dropped off later. That's my, my only concern. I mean, I know something has to be done, I'm not arguing that this is not gonna fit, it's just a question.
Well, I can answer. I spoke to, um, the principals at both schools and right now with the bus schedule, they say the students are in place. And you do have the occasional time, especially dual routes that buses delay. So I'm not gonna say that there's never a time that buses are not in place, but for the most part it are. Um, for the afternoon, um, the students are dismissed at the middle school at three ten. And so that, you know, with their, their time getting out and the travel time, they would pop, they would be leaving the high school a little bit later, but the middle school pick up first and they would go to the high school. So the middle school, they dismiss the time is earlier and that does allow for the time to get there. So students would, you know, get home a few minutes later. Um, but the buses, from my understanding, the students are already moving.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Higginson?
Uh, I had a question about the bank time. Uh, is it reasonable to ask at the, if it's like February in one year instead of the May term, to bring it up more than work to consider what to do as next steps?
Just kind of like update of where we are all the time?
Yeah, like an update and, I don't know, I don't know if we have a say in that, but like if, if we, because, you know, we have so many hours on the calendar and we foresee a storm coming, you know, letting, letting the board know and I don't know.
Yes ma'am.
We do that.
We don't have, I, I'd say that because we don't have any, um, workdays in the second semester right now. I mean, there's like spring break and then like maybe one day of work. So if we ever have to do a bank thing, like, you know, we're sort of in a position this year, we're like, well, we better not have to have to make a day to let a spring break or then the school year. I mean, it won't be a good condition. But if we foresee it, it's gonna be a problem, like say in February, to be more proactive.
Yes ma'am.
Michelle?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. Um, so right now we have one hundred and eighty days planned in one hundred seventy seven for high school, correct?
Yes ma'am.
How many instructional hours are currently built into that schedule?
If you don't mind, I think my phone's not calculating or that guy's.
That's fine.
Um, so I'm in lock and ten. So for the first semester now, if we do this right change, um, do you want like the, the high school clock out or the entire?
Yes, just, well, with our current calendar, assuming the other schools, I guess is the question because I've, I've heard in the past that Healthex County, um, has more hours, more instructional time built into our schedule for today, as our day is longer, our instructional day and our instructional time is longer. So I'm curious how many hours we have built into it as a, is it the base of nine ninety or are we building in, you know, over a thousand, how many, how many hours do we have left in?
We're in excess of the nine hundred ninety and that's just because when they, when they come up to nine hundred ninety, that's basically knowing one hundred and eighty days of school times five and a half hours. There's no way that we could get what we need in five and, five and a half hours. Um, now we'll say even in looking like not all the numbers, um, and I don't want to call out different divisions, but we actually have less instructional time at the elementary level than we have at our counterparts do. Um, because we, our instructional day at elementary school starts later. So they, the nine ninety they have is that you have a minimum day of five and a half instructional hours and then just to, to what we need at the high school, that's six plus hours right there. And then when you have students getting all the other, um, important instructional opportunities and preparation opportunities they have and, um, extended learn opportunities they have, you can't assume about a half hour a day.
I mean, just with the, I mean, the, the number of minutes that they have to have for reading and the number of minutes that are required for math, I mean, how it then to do a P E, but I mean, you cannot fit it all in. If you meet all the state requirements, you cannot do a five and a half hour day. So you have to be more than nine ninety. There, there's, there's just no way.
And like some of the things they put in place, they put different things in place at different times. So some of the clock hour, um, requirements they put in, we'll put in after they talk about the one hundred eighty, nine hundred ninety. So really there's a mismatch in some of the expectations that the state has for us and what they give us at minimum. But we, what we do in our student service is that we don't give five and a half hours because there's no way possible that we could be able to do what they need.
It's a complete disconnect. Like, we almost feel like that nine ninety is an old, it's like one of those old statutes and, okay, that says that you're meeting, that you're, okay, you've met the minimum and you're, you're not gonna get penalized for it. But in order to actually meet the standard for what students have to have to, to achieve, you better be meeting all these other, like the new reading curriculum and the math curriculum and to do all these other things. You're also mandated to do this many hours of the, just the reading curriculum alone is, is all of these other requirements. So, I mean, we'll, we'll get those, we'll get those numbers.
And that, and that spreadsheet that we have, like if we need to do it more in fourth February.
We're happy, we're happy to share that spreadsheet with you of how many hours.
And what that does, the way we have it set up, I have a column for elementary, I have a column for middle and I have a column for high, because everyone has a different amount of instructional hours they're working on. The elementary has the least amount. Um, up until this, middle school had the most. Now this would be the high school, a little bit more time. And then what we can do from there, um, we have places to take out the amount for lunch, because lunch is excluded, but passing time can count. And then we also could analyze, remember we have an early release day, um, remember we have snow day, those hours are subtracted. So it's an ongoing thing. So if we have an early release day, I have one spreadsheet, right, just put the day, just so I can keep that in my mind. But then we go in there, we put those hours in there and it just constantly subtracts. So they're, they're not always even we're doing it. And, um, that could be shared at any point. We can even share the starting points so you all can see where we're working from. And that will give you the total by elementary, middle and high of where we start the year off as our baseline.
That would be really helpful to see the number of instructional hours, um, to see where we are for school. What, what's the bell time for a middle school to start?
They start at eight twenty.
So we would have the same start time for middle school and high school?
Yes.
How does that impact transportation?
Right now, um, and I can, I can, right now, I spoke to Mr. Davis today. He said currently the students are typically in place at that time now, you know, car riders, bus ri, car riders and people who drive themselves. You know, that would be something that they would need to work on within their personal schedules. And in middle school, the students are in place, with the exception of sometimes with dual routes or different things. We do have some buses that are delayed.
Would school, would the doors be open at the middle school earlier? Because a lot of parents have both kids to drop off, so they have to drop off a middle school student and they get to the high school and they don't get more high school student dropping off a sibling. So how do we work best there to make that?
Certainly would be possible.
They're open at eight now.
Yeah, yeah. They're both open at eight. So they, that gives them, and one other beautiful thing about it at the high school level is less time in the morning. So right now the students aren't, they get there at eight. That's like thirty minutes of, um, breakfast and enrollment time and it decreases that amount of time. So it's a, you know, good part of safety and being able to, um, behavior management at the school. Um, but they both build into the same eight.
We'd much rather have them get to school and get their day started rather than just be there for a half hour and really not be able to learn for a half hour. Be there for, you know, buildings open at eight, get started, get in, get started. So.
And the three days missing is for the first semester specifically. So is this new bell schedule recommended for just the first semester or is this for a full year?
When we discussed it earlier, we thought it'd be best for the full year, just so when people get their routines that we do not shift back and forth and it also, um, will allow us to, you know, look at things as the year goes on if we have, if you have other conditions, it gives us more instructional time to work with.
Ms. Colmore?
She actually asked.
Okay, okay, so. How long before what you guys are doing, the manipulate, manipulation that you're doing with this scheduling gonna catch up with us and the state gonna come down on us about that? Or will they?
I think we're trying to keep it positive. We're trying to be proactive and like, we are, we have more than our instructional time.
And this is actually one of the recommendations that they shared as a strategy.
State, the state's.
Yes, same from the Assistant Superintendent.
That's gonna take care of what the price the families have about coming early or coming late?
I think we're all, I think we will change, just change the challenge. So I do think one of the, um, those will have to address that there will be people who are unhappy with it. That's why we want to make sure we communicate as soon as possible. Um, so the state didn't say that everyone's gonna love it, but the state said it's something that we could work towards to, um, help us make sure that we're following it.
They, they gave you a date that I don't want to get up to that or?
Well, I, I think opening, about the opening of school, I think we should have a plan for, you know, I, I think they prefer this rather than just allowing three missed days and not having a plan to how you're gonna recover that time. So I think we should have a good solid plan for how are you gonna, you know, have those, those three days made up and doing it over the course of the year. This was their recommendation. So having it from two assistant superintendents from the state, I think, you know, we take their recommendation and we follow it. I think, I mean, I think that's, that was their, their recommendation. We implement it and we, we go forward with it. I think that's a, that's a solid recommendation coming from the Department of Education. And it still allows us to open the school with a reasonable amount of time and move forward.
Okay. I just want to make sure you now read this up so that I can catch the point.
No sir. No sir.
I think if we did.
The state will step you up.
No, I think if we did not, I think if we just took those three days and so we're not gonna ask their advice, we're not gonna do anything and then if, and if they gave us that advice and we chose not to follow it, then that would. But we asked for their advice. We are openly saying this is what they recommended and we would like to implement what they said and follow it. I think that is the wisest choice.
Ms. Higginson?
Um, you guys are looking for approval for the, the new bell schedule at this time? Or are you looking, is, I mean, is this, obviously this is what was suggested by the state. And so guys, are you, are you looking for, for, um, board approval today? Or do we need any kind of, I don't work for this or what?
I don't know that it requires for approval because it came from the state. I think it's mainly just information. I think, I think if the state kind of told us to do it, I, I feel pretty certain that we should just move forward and, and do it. You all asked for us to get back with you on, with information about, and really it's information about bank time and, and snow days and, and all of that. I think you all just asked for further information, but we all, we asked for them, please tell us how we can do this in the wisest way. And they gave us their recommendation and I really feel like we should, we should follow the Department of Education's recommendation.
Michelle?
Yeah, we'll ask questions. So if we're extending the high school, school day by twenty minutes, ten minutes in the morning, ten minutes in the afternoon, ninety days built in for our semester, that's eighteen hundred minutes and thirty hours. So we're adding thirty hours of instructional time for three missed days, which is fifteen hours, sixteen and a half hours of missed instructional time. Is that right?
Well, we're doing it off a, like right now, our first semester is at, is not at ninety.
We're at ninety.
Sister, we're already short. First semester was already shorter than second semester. It wasn't at ninety.
Do you know how many?
Right now we're at eighty four. So we.
So that's twenty eight hours?
Yes.
So we're adding twenty eight hours and in one day we have five and a half hours of instructional time?
No.
No.
That's what the minimum is, our normal day. It's seven hours.
So we're adding four days to the timeframe? Just trying to see if there's.
We're in the course of a year. So really when you add ten minutes, you're really never gonna get back a full day of instruction. So, I mean, it's, it's almost a courtesy when you're adding just five minutes at a time. It really is unknown. It's a way to satisfy the state requirement over the course of a year. You're really never gonna get back three intentional days of instruction, but we're also doing it over the course of a year.
Very good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. All the new business, um, June twenty sixth, meeting, set a page with everybody scheduled, the final budget maybe, I think, six o'clock, regular time, regular place. You got it, what I brought up. Your virus? Yep, okay.
Did you say six o'clock?
Yes. BSBA delegate in Paul Tremont. And Michelle, left here. Ballotiers. Congratulations.
Sure.
So delegates, Ms. Colmore, Paul Tremont is running. All right, thank you. What kind of update, Mr. Lewis?
Good evening, everyone. Many aides that were committed to, for the proposed update, so kind of get how that committee consisted of representation from elementary, secondary, central office and school board members. Uh, so these recommendations came as a result of that committee. They should be in your packet. Uh, so on page two, if you'll notice, under compulsory attendance guidelines, uh, we chose to strike that paragraph. It included information about the number of days for attendance. And we put in new attendance expectations. I'll give a brief overview without reading the entire thing. Uh, so primarily at the elementary and middle school level, if you miss eighteen or more days, you could be subject to retention. At the high school level, there would be no more than nine absences per semester. Uh, if you did miss over nine, uh, you would require a waiver in order to receive course credits. Uh, so there is some information. Uh, so there is some information that ways to make up time. Additionally, there are a list of waiver reasons that are highlighted in this document. If you move on to student dress code, uh, the committee did recommend adding two items. Uh, move non-medical face coverings, a mask, and additionally move sunglasses. Also wants to strike when a school staff member or school administrator disgustingly dressed or grooming violation. The student adult should be the same gender as the student. Get the practice.
Peter?
Yes, sir. It's, it's highlighted for you right there. It says when a school staff member or school administrator disgustingly dressed or grooming violation with a student, the adult should be the same gender as the student. Practical. Committee, uh, with consistent principles. And a lot of folks thought we should strike this from this document. Uh, finally, uh, we wanted to add under exclusionary discipline after school intervention, uh, which has been used at our secondary schools. So those are the changes we're asking for the board to approve tonight, uh, so that we can do it. Uh, we're getting the code of conduct printed out to our families.
Questions, Ms. Lewis?
I got one.
Yes.
It's like, probably not related to this. Um, I'm, I'm fine with it, by the way, but the only thing I've, I've asked about, and I, I don't know if this goes under the code of conduct, but we talked about getting middle school and high school on the same level with code of conduct and athletics.
Yes, sir. So we're actively working with our two school principals at high school, middle school and A Ds. We actually have a follow-up meeting this Thursday, uh, to iron out those regulations. And, and with the superintendent chair's provision, we'd like to share those updates in the July meeting for those regulations.
Right, right.
Uh, so they are currently being aligned with our code of conduct too and have leveled defenses in the same place. So we're having to put in a little more work on that document to get to where it's gonna be. Should have an update in July.
Perfect. And you looking a little motion to about this, honey?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think motion to about.
I have a question, Stu.
Yes, Mr. Bob.
So this takes care of the last part that, um, he just actually dealt with the fact that we had some problems with. Some existing problems with the high school group and the middle school group not being on the same wavelength and their whole goodness. One of them got this and the other one got that. So you working on straightening that out so it would be all joint?
Yes, sir. So that, that's exactly what we're attempting to do with that committee, uh, is get both of those athletic regulations, both for the high school and middle school, uh, that they will be the same consequences should a certain behavior take place. Uh, so, so we're actively working on that and we'll bring that back to the board in July.
So that just with regular stuff, that would be title nine and stuff.
Alright, so it would, title nine is separate from those regulations. Of course, we have a method from which folks to report that to us uh, in an investigation process to take place. Uh, but what, what we were understanding about that is that we wanted those regulations to match so that if a student at the middle school and a student at the high school had a similar infraction, that they would receive a similar consequence, uh, rather than it being two separate consequences. So it should keep us from having that scenario any further. Like, we're, we're pretty close to having it ironed out. So the middle school had to do more adaptation, uh, than the high school did to get to where we wanna be. But, uh, before we bring it to the board, we wanted to meet both principals, uh, and A Ds to make sure that everybody feels good about the direction of those regulations.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Here in discussion, the motion on the floor in a second, all those offenders of adopting these policies, say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, say no.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, continue. Okay, thank you. So facility use update, as you guys know, if you transition or in the process of still transitioning to online. Um, if you can, Mr. Davis proceeds, this, this is our team, uh, that, that works on it. I think everybody on here knows, knows these teenagers, but, uh, I did wanna share a little information with you guys about how we're modernizing the approach and what we've done up to over the last sixty days, like this transformation. Uh, so why the changes needed to begin with? Uh, we were still on manual paper. Uh, this led to delays in some of the states, just, just being quite honest, uh, lack of centralized tracking, uh, facility availability. Uh, so it was difficult for us to know, we should be on the work paper. Uh, we rely, allow our principals to share that information. Uh, sometimes inefficient communication between departments, uh, that the building, the air condition, or even things of that nature. Uh, it also increases administrative work today. Uh, so you, you guys, just so you know, the information in, in this slide here, uh, with the cartoon characters and so forth, is not our information. That was just there, uh, to share, uh, on, on the PowerPoint here. So the solution we came up with as a division, uh, was operations he wrote. Uh, as, as you guys know, cloud-based platform for facility management. Um, we, we've been working on, on learning this process. We're on some tests, putting in some of our current rentals. Uh, so we share his emails with, for folks who are from the divisions who need to approve. Uh, also helps us generate, uh, bills and things like that, invoices, uh, for the people who are renting. So here are a few milestones. March, we had private kickoff. In April, we've been ballot testing in select schools and internal administrative users. And, and our goal is to fully roll this out to the district, uh, in July before we start school in August. So that, that all the ballot rentals and agreements will be down online. Uh, so this has already led to a lot of reduction in processing time, uh, which is important, not only for us but for the renter. Uh, enhanced scheduling accuracy, uh, making confident resolution, you know, the bill is not available, whatever, we're able to share the information more readily. And, and it helps us track our data. So we pull it from any, any computer and we're hopeful, with future answers, to be able to get a little mobile app. So now that we can use our, our telephone to, if we have a question, we should be able to respond even quicker to that. And of course, the integration of a payment process in the system. Uh, we're not quite there on that yet, but we'll get there. But it has, all the payments since we started this have been coming to the central office. And that process seems to work better, uh, to work to get the money to where it needs to be. Uh, so once we go online, that'll be even more efficient. Uh, obviously, we're gonna need ongoing training for, for our staff and particularly our home buildings. Uh, but the platform are very user-friendly. I don't think there'll be any challenge, uh, for our folks to use it. Uh, kind of a few next steps there. Uh, and some things we talked about previously, community comment pass. Uh, still wanna apply that for campus users. You know, someone's playing tennis or using the campus for track walking, different things like that. So those passes were still the issue at central office, but we do want to relieve the seventy-five dollar fee for that. And we're also recommending that there be no new high school rentals, uh, at, at least in January one. Uh, with the demolition and other things going on around the new school, uh, it would be difficult for us to, to agree to any terms or conditions uh, with the renter because of, of safety. And, and we don't know that. I've never seen the demolition of a school of that size or a building that size. So I, I, I don't know. I don't think any of us know what spaces may even be available. Uh, that's just kind of an update on where we are with facilities. Uh, really, really liking the program.
Great, of course, great. Mr. Lawton, some felt the keys, probably.
I have two questions, Mr. Chair. Um, so I guess, Mr. Lewis, my first question is, how, how, what, like, what, lack of term there, um, do you ask for rentals? Is that the interior and exterior?
Yes, that, that would be both interior and exterior. I just, due to uncertainty of the amount of large equipment, dumpsters, I, I'm not even sure what all they may need to bring in. Uh, and we've had a discussion about this, so this is inclusive of, of both indoor and outdoor facilities.
So my second part of my question before I ask my next question would be, I'm one of those who are in favor of our, our facilities being community properties and, you know, community use. I mean, that's my preference. However, if we think it's a safety issue, I would think that we should cover all facilities. You know, for example, uh. You know, I'm using tennis courts, just baseball proximity to the school. If you're worried about safety, I mean, obviously there, the closest proximity to the school. When you start the demolition, I would think if the, you know, one of your baseball, softball fields, which are farther away from the school. If there are safety issues, then obviously tennis courts would be probably more of a safety issue. And, and I would use, if the baseball field is a concern, the safety, then it shares the same entrance as the track. So I don't know how I could argue to someone in public that, you know, the, it's a safety concern for the baseball field, however, the track is not a concern. So I guess on point again, my preference is for, for me to always be able to use these facilities, not just at the high school, but the middle school, the elementary schools, those, those properties, community properties. But, you know, if, if it is truly a safety, um, issue, I hope we take a broad, um, broad approach to that and, and lock it in all the facilities, even if it's, once we get to that point in the construction, here we have to lock them. You know, it has to be timed for certain periods. So that's my first fault. And my second fault is, um, when we passed, um, when motions, um, were passed to, for these schedules, one of the parts, the second part of the motion was to revisit the fees in sixty days. I don't know, we're outside of the sixty days at this point. And I understand that it may be a good reason for that. I mean, and my, just looking here, sixty days, maybe it shouldn't have started until July, I would be pretty policy. And thanks, and I guess my request would be, if we could commit to, in September, I mean, have a follow-up to revisit the fees, to see where we are now with the app that we're working. We said sixty days, but we never really circled back, but I'm okay with pushing that sixty days for the actual implementation date, uh, the, um, when it's fully implemented, which I think was July. I read that calendar correctly. So if we could commit in September to review the fee structure, to see if we're all the, or we like where we need to be, if we need to make minor adjustments, um. That would be my request. I mean, here in September, I'm not done now, that's, Mr. Chair, if you, if you.
We'll get on that, yeah.
Yep.
That's all, okay, thanks. Mr. Bob?
Did you say that the seventy-five dollar fee now and then stopping due, wait?
Is that, is that your recommendation?
We never, we never started, we never implemented, cause we, you know, we got the tags going and, and all of that. And we just felt like, you know, we still would like to do the, the, just ask them to come and fill out a volunteer form so we can know who's there and we give them a tag, just so we can know who's on our brands and who's allowed to be there. But, you know, we just feel like, okay, we, we don't have to do the, the fee associated, but if we, we still are going to pay security that extra. We are still gonna be paying the additional security fee, um, for that. So we still would like to be able to run that, um, check to say, okay, would you please at least show us this tag that says you are allowed to be on this property?
Okay, that answers that. So, um, when you do get this thing out, stay now, could you make sure that the county people know that they gotta put an application in? When the time comes? Cause time out for us, thank you that everybody knows to do that. Cause obviously they don't, from what has happened in recent times. So I would appreciate something that went out, you know, just a little thing in the paper or in the newspaper or on where else, site or something. That this was gotta be done in order to wanna use the facility, pay for it and all that kind of stuff. So if you gotta fill out the application, I'll put this on there. I have, I don't care. I have to know, uh, as long as they know. Cause we, we can assume if you don't have to.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you all.
Thanks.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Uh, including your packet, you'll find the May, um, two thousand twenty-five policy updates. Uh, there are a total of forty, uh, policy updates. Um, so this is just for first read and then for the, the next month. Uh, next month, we'll come back with the, with the final, um, version of that and we'll make sure that you all have that in enough time to, um, to preview and ask questions and so we can move forward. Thank you. Thank you. Let's go.
Good evening. Um, tonight, the middle school, um, now will be presenting their, um, our proposal for adoption of a new English language course textbook. And have some of the experts with us who are in the trenches every day with the students here to present with us. We have Mrs. Wall, who's assistant principal at the middle school, and Mrs. Tiffany Whitlow, who's an English eight teacher. And, um, if you all would like to view as we're going over, we have a couple of books with us about H R N. And this time, I might turn it over to Ms. Milton.
Thank you, Ms. Milton, for this opportunity. Um, first of all, I wanted to let you all know that we did, um, have a very good team approach as we, uh, adjourned this textbook, uh, review process. So we started with, um, two general textbooks, which were perfection and H M H, which are used, um, a lot in our region eight area. Uh, we reviewed the books on, and they're also on the board of education's approved site as well. And then we collaborated with the English six through eighteen, um, the sped teachers, the reading specialist, the instructional coach. Everyone had, um, some input into this as well as our district, uh, Ms. Milton. Um, then we engaged in a workshop that was taken by H M H. And teachers also, um, did a spreadsheet where they evaluated the standards to determine if the books, um, displayed adequate, limited, or no evidence of the standard in their series. And then, uh, the last step in our process was we gave off the parents an opportunity to come in, um, and complete a survey and review the two different textbook options. So we did though, uh, we did, uh, make sure that everything was aligned with the course, our standard course study, um, Virginia S O L. And then also looking at the Virginia literacy act. Um, our current materials were outdated and not aligned. They did not provide a good foundation, um, for our students and the technological demands that they have. And they did not, they're just outdated from the science of reading also and, um, what they push. So the new materials are aligned with the science of reading and they also present evidence-based strategies to help the teachers do better, um, in delivering the lessons. It also strengthens our core curriculum, um, so that it helps all students and it's built in scaffolding techniques and opportunities for acceleration as well. Next, um, we did like a pros and cons of each textbook series. So the perfection book was more traditional. Had a strong grammar and writing series. We did like that. It was not visually appealing, um, and we figured the students might be a little bit bored by that book. Um, the information sometimes lacked clarity and was also somewhat worrying. And this came from the teacher's review of this material. And then H M H was definitely aligned and highly recommended. Um, it aligns with the LA, uh, Virginia standards of learning. And also our elementary schools are using H M H material as well. So we figured it would be a good carryover for elementary, from elementary to middle school. Um, also, H M H offers continuous, um, support. Uh, the representatives, Dave and, um, Allison came and met with us one day, met with each team and showed some highlights from the series. And it was just awesome to see all the things that are now available to teachers. Um, and they're not having to pull from different places to create things. Um, but then, um, we did say that sometimes H M H was a little bit overwhelming and sometimes it had limited examples of some literary terms. and sometimes it had limited examples of some literary terms, but teachers didn't have to, so they will suffer from that. Um, some work will be needed to place, uh, our books online, um, on the student computers, so they will have digital access. And, um, that's the only thing that we really see that will be, um, needed, um, to prepare for the digital part of it. Because students will have an actual workbook, and they will also have a digital copy on their laptops as well. And this Tiffany Whitlow is going to share her teacher perspective. Thank you.
Um, keep going. I'll come back. Um, this, when my team looked at the book, we, we just fell in love. Um, looking at both the perfection and the HMH, um, like Ms. Wall said, the perfection, just even the touch of it wasn't exciting. It was very bland, um, and it just didn't, didn't line up the way, um, the HMH did. Um, I was a career changer coming in as a teacher, so I tried to look at this as a first-time teacher, what they would feel like seeing this textbook. And also, I'm a veteran now, I've been teaching for, going on my years. So, um, the department felt like that it was more modern and visually appealing and had way more interesting stories. Um, it's also very, um, English language learner friendly. Um, I'm sure you guys know, we have a lot of students coming in from all over. Um, I had a student this year that could not speak English at all. And that textbook offers scaffolding instruction and all kinds of struggling readers right there. You have it right at your fingertips. Teachers will have to spend twenty minutes trying to figure out how to come up with a lesson when the kid walks in, and just grab that book and put it in front of them when they get where they need to. Um, it also has edible we, edible weekly lesson plans. Includes student-teacher additions that are both user-friendly with online assessment data grouping, which helps when we get into testing and the new, to put the students in smaller groups to work when we need to. Um, and also, like I said, the differentiating of learning options, um, whether it's the struggling readers or those that, um, have language barriers. Um, adding this textbook would allow for the county bond alignment, because our elementary schools are already using it. So it would be much easier for fifth-grade students coming in, sixth grade, and it would flow easy for the students as well. Um, the online service allows for student writing services. It's automatic and immediate feedback on the writing process, which is great for us as eighth-grade teachers, because we're preparing our students for the, our R W test in March. Um, and having access to textbooks, which is also a workbook for the students. We can get back to note taking and annotation, which a lot of students, you know, they're on that Chromebook all the time, and they lack those skills. So using this workbook and also having the digital option would be great for teachers and students like. Um, and we just see that this textbook would just be easier for teachers, students, and it would be able to flow and help them on their future.
Go back to previous slide. Um, there was a two-week window, uh, for parents to review the textbooks. We did have five parents complete the survey. Uh, four of those parents preferred the HMH book. And they found that the HMH included a variety of literary selections, as well as a variety of perspectives. So those were highlights from the parents' opinion.
And I just want to go back to some of the comments that were made about, you know, the LA. Um, what is different with the middle school and the Virginia Literacy Act? And the elementary, how the teachers noted that there were some gaps. Uh, we have a little bit, we have a lot more flexibility at the middle school level when it comes to the way we implement the curriculum, the way we implement the resource that goes along with it. And, um, so the seven-year agreement would be a total cost of two hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred eight dollars and seventy cents. Um, every year, the softback book that you're all passing around, we get a new batch of those for each student to have their own copy. And what Ms. Whitlow was talking about, writable. So even when it comes to our intervention and supplemental resources, what we do have to make sure we follow, um, for the Virginia Literacy Act is that we only use materials from the approved state lists. And writable, which is included in HMH, is on the approved list by B O E to support students in writing. Um, it also includes, um, some intervention to increase student engagement. And students will also, um, get different, we get class sets, different novels. So it's not just what's on the computer, it's not just within those books. We aren't going away from novels. Um, there's a choice that comes along with this proposal, where the teachers will be able to get some pair of texts to go along with these to, um, to continue the development and love of reading. And then just, um, to make sure that we can be comfortable with the way we do it, and that we have ongoing support to our teachers to make sure that, um, it's not just you give the stuff and move on. Um, we want to also give the package for the documentation support, which have them come in at the end of the year to provide interpersonal support. But then maybe a month or two later, they come in and work alongside our teachers in the coaching support and coaching capacity to see how they're using it and provide different supports there, as well as, um, coachly, which we've been, um, playing around with it. Or we've exercised it at the elementary level, which gives, um, you can make appointments. We can get live help as well, um, it could be good for P L C students when they're looking at data. They do all sorts of different supports to help us do that for our students. So tonight, we do ask for your approval, um, so that we can get the materials, um, that we feel are best for our students and for.
Um, if, if this is approved, um, how quickly will this be, what school will this be available for?
Go forward. So they, um, you know, gave us some different samples. The teachers have been looking at it, because we're, because some are doing, some are for Hillmore. And so they will have time for all of this to make sure, um, that with our pacing, that we have the resources and the plain documentation.
Yes. Sorry, Mr. Lowden.
Oh, we have a textbook money that is, is fear locked, and we can't spend it on anything but textbooks and scrolls over there this year. So we have, we have money set aside, and we can only set, um, textbooks and instructions here and what we're hoping is. Oh, yeah, okay, we're.
Second. Any other questions, any other discussion? Mr. Pop.
Here, Peter. That's the teacher edition for the eighth grade.
What's this?
That's the student edition for the eighth grade. So that has the stories, it gives them opportunities and the margins, so they can write in it, they can take it home as well.
Are we gonna get them to get through this for the first year? And you're gonna take two years?
Our goal is to get through it in the first year. You know, we will look at our pacing. That's our goal.
I'm just looking at how thick it is, it's reminding my heart of it. The like was in his history, one of our three, and then Andrew Rice did it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Motion for a second, although in favor of approving this, uh, series of books that I have. I suppose they don't.
Thank you all, thank you, Ms. Wall and Ms. Whitlow.
Next is a social media policy, which brought to my attention a few weeks ago that the board does have currently have a, a policy in place for board members. Um, as included, uh, in the package today, if you also review. This policy does not have any impact on anybody's personal, the school board page. Uh, we've all been in V S B A training to where a Facebook page or any type of page described in this policy is strongly discouraged. And this is a policy that has been placed in several other, uh, counties.
Any questions?
Any discussion?
So we can't have Facebook coverage at all?
This has no in, impact on a personal Facebook page. This would only have it, and in fact, if you had a Facebook page, uh, as a board member putting board information on it.
Like, what's board information that the public can't get? The, the, the information that we said.
Yes, only above.
All of the above?
Yeah, certainly you can't put anything that's discussed in closed session.
Right. But they ain't all above, the person I said was, it was open session.
I said yes. It would prohibit any information in open session, and certainly any in closed session, so yes, both your questions.
Why would we put a limitation on, on the, on the open session? Well, they can go around on Facebook and get it off of Facebook.
Well, they, it's not on Facebook, it's on, it means on YouTube, and that's, that's not gonna stop.
Wherever it is, whatever it is, what's gonna happen?
That's not gonna stop.
Right, so.
Well, that's not what this is dealing with, Mr. Pop.
Well, what's this dealing with, because you're telling me I can't talk about what we're talking about in here?
I didn't say you can't talk about it. You can't, you can't have a Facebook page dedicated to school board business. It's deemed as a school board page. Again, in just about every V S B A training that we've all attended, pages like this are strongly discouraged.
Sounds like some constitutional problem right there.
It's not stating that you can't have the page, it's just stating guidelines. There's a copy on board docs.
Probably on what?
On board docs, there's a copy of the policy on board docs.
I wouldn't do it anyway, it would sound like you're dealing with some, really, uh, constitutional problem.
So it's the same issue that during my day job, I prohibited of, of having a page like this that I, that I said, hey, stock X Y Z shows.
I say that for you, because it.
Well, it's the same thing, because we're deemed to have knowledge of certain subjects. And by a person having a page like that, it, they're perceived as speaking for the board.
Speaking for the board.
Correct. Michelle.
So can we clarify that, because item B, there's section A for personal use, and there's section B for professional use? Um, and that's not saying that it's forbidden, it's providing guidelines and requirements that have been outlined by the S B A. This is, they're right as well. So are you saying that? I mean, this is saying that we can. Are you?
Well, yes.
Is this vote saying that board members can no longer have a social media page specifically for school board activity?
How?
I read this, that it's still allowed following these guidelines.
Well, they're pretty strict guidelines, and generally they're not in place.
Correct. But this doesn't restrict it, this first, this says the guidelines are, um, you have to clarify that you're not a spokesperson for the school board or the school division. Um, has to clarify that it's for, um, only talking about topics related to Caltech County Public Schools. Um, do not facilitate near overtime discussions. So this is saying that it is allowed, and these are the guidelines that follow. But your statement was just saying that it is not allowed.
No, that, that was my statement, that is correct. These are guidelines. It also says in the fact that you cannot block any followers, that, that the page has to be open completely to the public. So these are restrictions as to what a page like that would look like if someone had one. But again, they've been strongly, uh, discouraged.
Yeah, I've, I've done a lot of P S B A training as well, and, and one of them last year specifically was on social media. It was early for a session. And they literally had us sitting in there and said, take some pictures, post on your pages or your Facebook pages, saying that you're at the S B A doing training on this. So it is discouraged, because there are a lot of guidelines that are difficult to interpret, and you have to be aware of them. But they also support it in terms of community engagement, making folks aware. A lot of school districts have, um, they're, they're, I, I forget that all of the terms are for different social media groups, because I can't keep up with kids. But, um, they have pages on the different social media, um, platforms, TikTok, all of those, so.
Who's running these pages?
Depends on where they are. Some of them are run by the school system, like the TikTok stuff.
And that's saying that that's fine for you.
Correct. And others are run by school board members who are responsible to the constituents in their county, and clear communication with them is allowed. And I just want to be clear, because we all know that I have a group that is specifically for school board stuff. It is professional, it is reasonable, that, that zero fights, um, it has not been issued, but I do get.
It's open to the public?
There are requirements there that I also discussed with the S B A. If you ask questions, to make sure that it is a valid, protected user. It's considered open, you cannot disallow someone access for any other purpose other than validating that it is a valid account, which is how I do it. I have followed every single one of these calls. I am compliant with this. But if you, if the board is telling me that I should no longer have that, I need that vote to take away my First Amendment rights.
I don't think the policy says that.
Yeah.
A policy does not.
No, and again, this policy is enforced by many counties throughout the state.
I am fully informed of this policy.
Many counties are doing, the many counties can, you violate your First Amendment rights.
I hope not.
Right, ho, I hope not too, that, that means, just like, I hope they don't arrest all people, send them back to, over to, uh, South America, but they're doing it.
I don't think it follows your, that.
I understand it did, I understand. But if it did, you'd be in trouble for yourself. Yeah, right. I did say it was a First Amendment violation too. Listen, just, just you to make sure you understand that.
So we got a motion, a second, some discussion, any other discussion? Although in favor of adopting the file.
I'm on roll call, vote on that, please.
Roll call.
District one, Mr. Running?
Yes.
District two, Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah.
District three, Mrs. Six?
Yes.
District four, Mr. Nathan?
Yes.
District five, Mr. Clay?
Yes.
District six, Ms. Shatwell?
Yes.
District seven, Mrs. Scum?
Yes.
District eight, Mr. Fox?
Nope.
Motion carries sixty-two.
So who's gonna come here and look at my material and see it's all about it again?
Nobody can, because.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, if you put them.
It's for your mom's stuff.
It's for you. That's what I'm saying, it's for you, but if you put them. Yes, it is.
That's why I want another thought to that, because I'm here by the way, and that's just.
So it's a section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven of Code of Virginia. I move with the board from the meeting's purpose, considering the problems that we have today, personnel, viewpoint, presentation, salary. Specific position four is authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven dot A one. Section of the contract, including persons added on the list, listed on the section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven dot A four. Specifically, specific students of civil division is authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven dot A two. Contracts and discussion of the award of contract, you will be expected to apply upon, including interviewers. A figure with theater and albers, and discussion of the terms, codes of such contract, or discussion of concession. Ten, thus, they attack the bargaining position, negotiating strategy of the common body is authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven dot A. Twenty-nine, under the statute.
Motion for, there are two main, vote session second, discussion, although in favor, say aye. I suppose they don't.